We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Mon Gaye County Commission for September 30th, 2020, 7 o'clock, and all commissioners are present, and we will begin with consent and approval. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning. We have 19 exonerations for $7,565.40, vouchers, general county fund, $61,962.29, 911, See, Camp Muffley, $3,103.82, Mason-Dixon Park, $1,096.49, assessment valuation, $20,473.79, payroll, $918.729.63, purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, $19,431.69, 911, $472.08, Camp Muffley, $372.42, Mason-Dixon Park, $39.72, assessment valuation, $95.45, for a voucher total of $1,025,989.24. Purchasing, or I'm sorry, physician vacancies for boards and authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, Mon Gaye County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, abandoned dilapidated enforcement agency, Mason-Dixon Park Advisory Board, Region 6 Planning and Development Council, Historic Lammericks Commission, and the Mountain Air Trail Network Authority. District orders for September 30th, 2020.
Vote for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are there any introductions of new employees or personal changes?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay. We'll move on to comments from the public. We're now open for comments from the public. If you do wish to speak, come forward, identify yourself, and you will have three minutes to speak if you so choose to do so. Seeing none, we shall close comments from the public. Colleen, do we have grants? We have no grants. Correspondence?
We just have one letter from a Wallace Venable, Helms Road, regarding the degradation?
Degradation.
Okay. Epoxy coating on pipes stored at the Morgantown Industrial Park.
I do want to make a point that you skipped over item seven on the agenda, so let's finish with correspondence and then we go back to that. I do have a piece of correspondence. I have a gentleman that's been emailing me, David Schrewsbury, he lives at Snake Hill Road, and he's usually touching base with me about the status on broadband. I did want to acknowledge that I have received his email, and with everything we've been doing with COVID, we haven't been able to really get a focus on what we can do as a county in regards to broadband, but we really do need to have that. My suggestion was to have kind of a broadband roundtable where we just get the people in the room to figure out what we don't know. So we need to get that scheduled sooner rather than later, and certainly, you know, involve the school board in that discussion. So anyhow, I just wanted to make sure I acknowledged that.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Do we have any correspondence, Tom?
No.
Okay, all right, we'll go back to the opening, bid openings for notice bids of 2020. This is for Chestnut Ridge Park, 2020 MCC-CRP-003. I believe we have two bids?
Yes, I have one.
Thank you, okay. I'll have both of you open those.
From the envelope, my bid says Brian Vander Vender Contracting, and this was received 9/29/20 at 9:12 a.m., which was in accordance with our instructions. And the total, there's, yeah, it's a total bid price and not to exceed bid price of $26,485.
Okay. I've received from Blue Gold Development, September 30th at 9:03 a.m., and the installation and overall price is $30,627.
I would move that we forward these quotes to our facilities director to review and provide a recommendation back to the commission in regards to award. We want to make sure that everything is covered.
Yes. Okay. I'll second that, and...
It's okay.
Yeah. All in favor of?
Aye.
Signify by aye, please.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Unfinished business, have we any?
Sure.
Can I make one more suggestion again, because we're under a time delay? Do we want to forward this for review by the facilities director and allow him to go ahead and make a decision, or do we need to come back to a formal meeting and announce that decision?
I mean, typically, you would ask for a recommendation and vote on it during the meeting and award the bid.
Okay, all right, well, then, that's, we'll, most case, we'll try to get this on next week's agenda.
Yes.
Do you have time to do that? Yeah?
All right, sorry.
All right, any unfinished business? Hearing none, new business. This is the first reading regarding the Mon Gaye County Planning Commission Resolution P-01-20 to amend the text in the West Run Planning District zoning ordinance to strike the text from Article 101200.05a by striking containing no more than 16 dwellings units per acre from the text.
That's all you need to do.
Red. Okay. B. Consideration of approval of an interchange collaboration agreement among the Mon Gaye County Commission, the West Virginia Department of Transportation and En Route Properties, LLC relating to the utilization of property tax increment financing to finance studies related to the proposed new interchange to Interstate 79, the construction of a proposed new interchange to Interstate 79, and the construction of infrastructure and site development in the area of the Morgantown Industrial Park. I believe we have Mr. Tom Amon on the line.
I haven't heard him.
He has not.
Deep in, so...
Okay.
Renata?
Oh, you are there. I'm sorry, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, so I could speak to this briefly if the commission would...
Please do.
Find that to be helpful, okay. And I don't, Glenn may be there as well, if you have any questions.
Yes.
But basically, this is a sort of bringing together this document and the MOU, the discussions that have been ongoing with the Department of Transportation regarding the Harmony Grove, or proposed Harmony Grove interchange, and similar to what was done with the new interchange at West Ridge, you know, there was a collaboration agreement or MOU that was put in place for that project. That seemed to be a good roadmap to get all the parties on the same page as to what everyone's respective obligations were going to be, and anticipated timeframes and budgets and things of that nature. So DOT was, you know, wanted to use a similar process here, so this collaboration agreement is a result of that and the discussions that have taken place. And so what we have is an agreement among DOT, the county, and En Route Properties, which is the developer of record for the Morgantown Industrial Park TIF district that's previously created by the county commission. So we have the existing district that's already in place, and that will be involved in this financing endeavor, and also a proposed new TIF district. And so what the agreement provides very generally is for the developer and the commission to take application to the development office to extend the life of the existing district from the existing 25 years to the full 30-year permitted life of the district. And this would allow the use of, and also the modification of the existing bonds that have been issued by the county and are currently held by MBB Bank to seek approximately $1.5 billion in additional funding through those existing bonds to pay for studies relating to the proposed new interchange at Harmony Grove, including environmental justification reports, things of that nature, that Thrasher Engineering is in place through the 5G process to prepare those required studies, which would be the next step in determining whether this interchange is feasible, can obtain all the necessary environmental permitting, and the precise location of the interchange. And so that process, once the bonds would be amended and provide funding for that, the approximately additional $1.5 million, then Thrasher would undertake that work, those environmental assessments and studies would be prepared, submitted to the county commission, and also DOT. DOT would then have an opportunity to consider what's been submitted, and, you know, whether those reports indicate that it's appropriate and cost-effective, justifiable, et cetera, to move forward with the new interchange at Harmony Grove. If the reports and everything that's submitted indicates feasibility, and DOT is, you know, not wanting to proceed for whatever reason, there's a process set out for the developer and the commission to have an opportunity to sit down with DOT and work through any concerns that they have. There's also a process for a, if, you know, if the results of all that indicate favorability, and DOT is starting to move forward, then there would be a process for a new TIF district to be created adjacent to the existing district and moving over westwards towards Interstate 68 and encompassing areas in that vicinity, where growth is anticipated in the future, not only from the existing Morgantown Industrial Park and building out towards that area, but also just growth generally, that could contribute to the TIF and the repayment of the bond. And so there would be bonds issued by the county commission in place with Department of Transportation, similar to what was done at West Ridge with that project, and the DOT would then proceed with whatever financing mechanisms are available to them, including whether that would be the approach to prosperity funding mechanism or other funding mechanism to actually pay, you know, design, build, oversee construction of the new Harmony Grove interchange, paying for those costs from their own funds, while at the same time making draws on the funds that the county would place with DOT to get credit for those expenditures. And then, as development builds out in the industrial park and otherwise in future years, and the increment grows in the district, that would allow them to get reimbursed for costs that they've incurred through payments on the bond, again, very similar to what was done at West Ridge. At the same time, the developer en route has development, has infrastructure needs in the industrial park, including the buildout of the roadway there to tie in to the new interchange, along with associated utility improvements and site work that would be necessary to create additional development in the industrial park and tie that development into the new interchange and allow access from the existing industrial parks to the new interchange and points beyond. So there would be bonds that the county would place with the developer, and the developer would incur costs through their own private funding to pay costs of that infrastructure buildout in the industrial park. And similar to what would be going on with DOT, they would be requisitioning and crediting payments of those costs into the bonds that the county has issued and has been placed with the developer, so that again, as the increment builds, they could get reimbursement of those costs through payments on the bond. And there would be a agreement, and the bonds would be structured such that the developer would have the ability to obtain all the revenues in the district and have a first lien on those to pay the developer held bonds up to what would be determined as necessary to establish a 20-year amortization and repayment of those bonds. And then, tax increment revenues realized above that would then flow over to the bonds held by DOT, and would be their funding mechanism to get those bonds paid. There would also be provision for the existing TIF district and the bonds held by MBB. Those bonds are anticipated to pay off within, in the next five to six years. Once those bonds would pay off, the revenues in that district, again, the existing district, would then be diverted over to DOT and be another source of repayment for their investment in building out the Harmony Grove interchange. So that's the outline of, and process that this agreement sets out, and it's been negotiated in detail with DOT. They're agreeable and on board with this, and just looking to the county to consider this, and if you all find it agreeable and a proven sign, and it would go back to them for signature. Just to touch quickly on timing, there's an exhibit to the agreement, Exhibit A, which shows the proposed new district boundaries for the new district that would be created, so you can get an idea of what that would entail. And then Exhibit B has some timings set out as to when different things would happen, estimated environmental clearance completion date through the studies that I mentioned, September 22 of '21, estimated interchange justification report completion date, December of '21, estimated advertisement for construction contract for the interchange, October of '21, estimated date for issuance of the interchange bond, February of '22, estimated construction start date, March of '22, and then estimated completion date. DOT is wanting flexibility here and to commit to have it done by December 31 of '25, although obviously there's an opportunity to perhaps complete it prior to that timeframe. So that's the overview, and then Exhibit C also sets out the anticipated tax increment revenues and how those revenues would be applied to repay the various bonds that would be outstanding.
Thank you, Tom. As usual, your explanations are succinct and quite understandable. Mr. Adrian, do you have anything that you would care to add to this at this time before action is taken?
Well, thank you. Again, Glenn Adrian, co-owner of the Morgantown Industrial Park, partner in En Route Properties, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. You know, you all, I've tried to keep you all abreast of the progress that we've made. This is obviously a big, big step to be taken as it relates to the potential for the Harmony Grove interchange. And Tom outlined a lot in a very short period of time through various and sundry months and years of negotiations with the Department of Highways as it relates to their willingness to consider the construction of the new interchange. There is another, one additional caveat that we both agreed to with the state was obviously the launch of this would be initiated with the securing of a project of significant TIF increment. Neither the state nor En Route would be very interested in undergoing the kind of debt commitment that they would be making in this investment economically until we've secured at least a project of, and we're currently working with one that we believe that will be that launch for, you know, for the TIF, for the county, and for North Central West Virginia. But other than that, Tom covered everything pretty distinctly. Needless to say, it is complex, as these are, but it is something that the commission is familiar with, having been through this with, you know, with the West Ridge interchange exit, I think it's 153. So, you know, we're very excited about this. This will, you know, this will get us started, we'll be able to initiate the contracts for the studies. As you could tell by the timeline, those take a long period of time. The environmental studies seem to be taken a lot. We are planning to model this very similarly to the way that Ryan Lynch and the West Ridge project went. In fact, we anticipate initiating engineering of the interchange in conjunction in a parallel process, you know, once we feel confident that there haven't been any environmental issue. We're not anticipating any. We had done some preliminary environmental work in advance of this, just to see if there were any potential, we don't believe there's any potential environmental or Army Corps issues that should delay or cause issues as it relates to the environmental studies that are going to be done. So if we're confident of that, by starting the engineering to go along with it, then we'll be prepared as these studies are being approved. The justification, it's called the Interstate Justification Report, is being moved along with the Federal Highway Administration, then we would be ready upon those approvals to be able to go out to bid for the, which we're hoping will be designed, built for the interchange, which really helped speed up the construction of the 153. And so we're using their model very similarly in this project. So that's all I have, is, you know, if any questions you have, I'll be happy to address those.
Glenn, thank you, and thank you, Tom, for outlining everything. As anybody listening can see, that this has been a lot of work on Glenn and Tom's part. It's been a long time coming. We've actually been talking about this for almost four years, and there's a lot of things, and Ben did a really good article a couple of weeks ago about the benefits of this interchange, not just to the industrial park, to the community, to Westover, to our whole county and the region. So I do think this is a very important project. I was fortunate enough to participate with Glenn in a call with both senators, and they are both, we talked mainly about the project that we're trying to bring here, but the interchange, one won't happen without the other, vice versa. So they're both excited about that and offered their support. So we already, I mean, we've already done a lot of due diligence. I believe you've probably talked to Congressman McKinley.
Yes.
So, you know, we've made sure that everybody that needs to, you know, help push whenever this thing actually moves forward is on board. So it's good when you have two senators, especially with different parties, that could be a big push. We weren't really asking for money, we're asking for their support and help pushing a lot of these bureaucratic steps, you know, once they get to on their doorstep. So, Tom, do you have anything?
I was just going to reiterate what you said. I mean, Glenn came to us several years ago, and at first we thought, because it was such an amazing project, and we really appreciate what you have done, what Tom's done, and Sean's correct, the enormous impact that we were about to have, especially that many counties in West Virginia are just trying to maintain what they have now. We're looking at the future, and this will be an unbelievable diversification of our economy, and also at the same time, really help Westover. So this is something that is very exciting, and even to get to this point, and as you said, both senators jumped on it, especially when we didn't ask for any money. They just said, how can we help move this at the federal level or anything you need? So again, we, I appreciate both your work on this. It's taken four years, it just didn't suddenly happen.
And this is really important for other entities in the state to take note, you know. In Mon County, you know, we bring solutions to the table. We have a problem, we're trying to fix, and we bring a solution to the table, not necessarily have our hand out waiting for Charleston.
Exactly.
So we're, you know, we've showed on Exit 153 that we're willing to put our skin in the game to actually get an interchange, and we did that, and it's already paid off. And we're asking for help with this interchange, and we're bringing solutions to the table, not just asking for our handout. So it's very important. So with that, Ed, do you have anything?
I do remember in the fall of 2015, as I, we had dedicated the ballpark, and I remember looking out over the chasm that existed from one end of the development to proposal at West Ridge. And, you know, it was a very exciting thing to see the timeline that occurred, and I think this timeline really can be achieved in less than the 25. So with that, I would like to have a motion of this consideration of approval.
Move that we approve the interchange collaboration agreement as presented.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I think this is going to be a momentous day starting forward.
I agree. And I don't want, also, I think you all are to be thanked because of your vision, your willingness to look at projects like this, the public partner, this is another prime example. I think what you taught the state on 153 is the ability to work together collaboratively, vote from a private entity and a public sector, to bring a vision together and show a way that is just not, even with this, this commission, without the commitment of the TIF funds in both projects, the state has secured their willingness to work together because they see a way that the state's going to be reimbursed for their, not just taking the money and basically applying it somewhere and not knowing what would happen to it. In this case, your willingness to be that conduit in the TIF, both from a private developer and from the state standpoint, is an example for the rest of the state in that public-private arena to how you can work together to achieve something collaboratively, which we hope will have and expect to have huge economic impact, not just for the county, North Central West Virginia, but those jobs help the state in general. So I thank you for your willingness and cooperation to do this.
Glenn, can I ask you one quick favor? This is completely unrelated to this project. We had a couple inquiries, we had a correspondence today about the pipe in the industrial park and the epoxy that's on that pipe. Would you give us an update on what you've, I believe you had?
Yeah, I'm happy to. What we know of is that obviously the pipe yard is leased to Atlantic Coast Pipeline. We do know the WV, the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection contacted us, needed to contact the pipe yard, because they received the same information, I believe, that you received, and I don't know for a fact, but I do know they've been on site. They have inspected. I mean, we are up there all the time. We don't see any erosion of the epoxy coating. We haven't, there's nothing in the water that we're aware of, and in fact, we have, I mean, we are fairly certain that pipe has now been sold, and over the fall will be removed from the park. So our understanding is there's no issues with the pipe yard.
Okay. I just, while you were here, I figured, since it was brought up this morning, and we had some come in last, a couple of weeks ago, I figured I'd add. We had some come in last, a couple of weeks ago, I figured I'd ask you. Thank you.
No, I did bring cop, the, I did bring, the, Tom asked me to bring copies of the collaboration agreement.
Yes.
So if you're willing, we can get it signed and then we can send that on to, down to the, their attorney at the Department of Transportation and get their signature.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any reports from elected officials? Hearing none. We'll go to reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yeah, just a short one. Um, tomorrow, I hope to see the, uh, county school system opening up to face-to-face teaching. I think people do not realize it's been seven months since we've got back to normal. And again, it's a partial opening. And I do realize that this has become a very heated and sometimes volatile situation. I would just personally, uh, request that we move forward carefully and those parents who choose not to send the children to school have that option and they could do it online. And unfortunately, the reality is that there is no vaccine at this time. There are no direct guidelines to follow and there are no set rules. We are all in uncharted territories. And I just only ask that both sides continue to express their views in a calm, adult manner and try to listen to both sides.
Thank you. Sean?
Uh, since the last meeting, uh, last Thursday, had, uh, Mon County Health Department Board of Health meeting. On Friday, we had staff reports. Uh, Monday, uh, the administrator and I had a call with legal counsel regarding the medical cannabis statute. Uh, today we have a regular day. Uh, I believe we also have a call this afternoon with the, uh, Medical Cannabis, uh, council, or, uh, our council regarding medical cannabis statute. Um, tomorrow I have my MAP Executive Committee meeting. And in the evening, I have my Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board meeting. And Friday, we have staff reports. Um, I was able to go to Willing this weekend. Uh, my best friend's daughter got married and, uh, actually had a, pretty, pretty much a COVID-free night. So it was nice, it was nice getting back home. It was kind of bittersweet because it was the first time that I've been in an event without, uh, Ms. D. So, um, it was, um, it was very nice to get together with some friends, friends I haven't seen in years. And I will, do want to, uh, send, uh, best wishes out to Tom. I'm not going to say your last name because I, I don't know if I'm, I have your permission, but a friend of mine was in a very bad bike accident on a rail trail. Uh, and, uh, I just, he's, he's actually the guy that inspired me to get my knees replaced because he had a double replacement and was on a bike in two weeks. So, uh, you know, Tom, you're my hero. Get well. I know you can fight through this and, uh, look forward to talking to you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I too would like to wish the Monongahia County students a first day of school tomorrow. Uh, as I witnessed this morning, uh, I'm right beside the bus turnaround. You, uh, you have to turn around at the end of a dead-end road. And my property is at the end of a dead-end road, so I get to watch the, the school buses in the morning. So today they did a test run. Uh, Friday, I did get to do my first read aloud since March, virtually, I must say, to Ms. Berkshire's first grade class at Cheat Lake. And I have found the perfect book that I bought yesterday for first day of going back to school tomorrow, or on Friday. So stay tuned for that. Tuesday, I have a very busy day. I will be in Kingwood in the morning. This is for a commissioner's legislative roundtable. And then back to our new 4H and Extension Center at Mylan Park for a 1 o'clock meeting of the Kitchen Committee. And at 3, and we're scheduled to meet the new WVU Dean of Extension, Dr. Jorge Atiles. And then at 4, the governor will be coming to town and to visit. And I hope to have been, uh, you know, we, I did invite him to come visit us in January. So, uh, this visit is coming to fruition thanks to those who have invited him and thanks to the fact that the property that he's coming to is to our new 4H and Extension Center. With that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned and thank you.